Peter Yarm.
Here.
Maurice LaRosa.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner. Here, sorry. That's the way the days they go. Charlie Masturberty.
Here.
Andrew R. Banowitz.
Here.
Lynn Stoll.
Here.
James Bailey Brislin.
Here.
Full house.
For the benefit of our audience, in the event of a fire, there's two means of ingress from the chambers. To your right through these double doors, take the first left, down the stairs and out into the parking lot, or to the rear of the chambers, the double doors, out onto the landing, down the steps, and out onto the town green. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the benefit of our audience, I'll just give you a quick summary of how we're going to conduct business tonight. The secretary will read-
Second Peter, can you hear us?
No.
Can't hear him. You can hear me.
His mic's on.
His mic's on.
Yeah.
Better?
Yeah, they're on.
How's that? Okay.
Sorry Chairman.
The secretary will read the legal notice. You'll be asked to come before the board, have a seat at the table in front of us. State your name and address for the record. You have an opportunity to present your application. The board may or may not ask questions of you. The audience will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or against your application. If anyone in the audience does speak, then the applicant will have final opportunity for comment. Additional information that we do not have in front of us, that you may have with you, that you would like to submit into the public record, can only be submitted while your public hearing is open. Once the public hearing is closed, we will not accept any additional information for review. Comments made by the public that are not relevant to the exercise of the commission's statutory or regulatory authority will not be considered by the commission in reaching its decision. Once your application's been presented, most likely we will vote on it tonight. You'll have an understanding of where your application stands. If we table it or defer it, then we will reschedule that meeting, most likely in 30 days. Either way, you will get written notice from the town on our decision. And for the record, a variance can be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance, and where strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties, and where use of the property, or reasonable use of the land, would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships cannot by law be considered as a reason for granting a variance. Madam Secretary, public hearings please.
Legal notice, Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Can you hear me? Can't hear myself. The Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 29, 2014, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the town hall, first floor, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. ZBA 2014-09-01 Gregory J. Benway, applicant owner, 136 Brainerd Road, MAP 058, Lot 0166, Zone R33. Request for a variance from the requirement that accessory structures shall be located behind a line established by the rear of the principal building on the lot, to allow the front line of the proposed garage to be located no more than 15 feet forward of the rear of the principal building. EZO Section 3.30.7I dated this 17th day of September 2014, Mary Ann Turner, Journal Inquirer, September 17th and 24th, 2014.
Thank you. Would the applicant please come forward? Okay. Let's just, James, can I have those? Let's just get these into the record first.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Mary Ann?
I have 14 eight-and-a-half by 11 color photos, but none of them have street names or any ways, so there's no way to actually describe them, so I can just give you the quantity.
Are these the 14 homes that are within the packet that we have?
Yes, they're all within one mile of my, of our home, at 136 Brainerd Road.
That defines it a little better, Jenny. Okay, sir.
We would like to move the garage forward.
Can you just make sure your microphone is on? The red light needs to be on.
Light is on, yes.
You pull it forward.
That better?
Better.
Okay. We'd like to move the garage forward from the front of the, from the rear of the house line, one to line up side door with the walk-in basement door, to make accessibility much easier for her with the scooter. Also, if it goes back-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Did we get your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Greg Benway. This is Natalie Vanderheiden, my wife. Address is 136 Brainerd Road.
Thank you.
And if we move it back to where it's beyond the house, the front of the garage will be about a foot off the ground, which would mean a very long, steep ramp, and almost impossible to get at, to drive a car in if we want to drive that car in. It's predominantly going to be a workshop, which we'll both be using.
Well, we set it up for that because you checked that town hall.
When, when I originally came in to ask about setting up a garage, I wasn't told it had to be behind the line of the house. So we did get something a little larger than we had planned on.
And we had the door lined up.
And had everything lined up, and I came in for the permit and was, then I was about halfway through the permit before I was told that it had to be behind the house.
Okay. Questions of the board?
When I went out to the property, you had made mention that your wife was going to use access through that white door.
Right.
So, in our rules, in what you're asking for is an accessory structure, it has to be behind the house. But if you were to attach it with a, like a connecting to it, to the house, you don't.
We are considering in the future adding a larger garage with an in-law apartment, which would mean we'd want to be able to move this one out of the way.
Which means the foundation-
It would, it would be a different, completely different foundation. It would be an attached structure at that point.
I can help you out. In-law apartments aren't permitted in Enfield.
What's that?
In-law apartments above garages are not permitted in Enfield.
I wasn't aware of that.
Just helping you out.
All right.
Thought they changed that last year. There is, there is new regulations.
If we just connect it-
Whether or not they're above a garage is another story.
What, do you know what the requirements for the foundation would be? A full, a full foundation, or pillars, or what?
That would be a building question.
Yeah, that's a building question.
Building department. You'd have to go see one of the building inspectors.
If we just connect it with the-
It would be considered connected, yeah.
What the commissioner was asking and trying to help you out with, let me see if I can go a different avenue. In the wintertime, you're going to have trouble with that scooter with the snow.
Correct.
If you had the garage where you want it, and all you did was build a roof that went from your garage to the, to the house, your problem is solved.
Right. Basically, I was going to attach it to the house, but not attach it to the garage, so it stays unattached.
It's better if, it fits our regulation if you attach it.
And then you don't need a variance. Then I need a foundation, a full foundation.
Does he need a foundation if he just has a little roof over a walkway?
That would be, again, a building question. Foundations are, unless it's, you know, over 50% of the house, we don't get involved in foundation questions.
But he's building a garage, and we know the garages don't need to have basements.
Yeah. But it needs footings. And from what I remember reading and checking with the building department back and forth, it had to be a full frost-free, the four feet down. Three feet down, I hit water. So it's a little tough to put a foundation in there. That's why the built, the house is a walk-in basement. Digging down any further is kind of tough.
Which would also require a variance, right?
I think so, I'm not sure.
If I may ask- Maybe I can enlighten this a little bit. Within your application, in a couple of different places, you have mentioned that you were going to put in a covered structure connecting the two.
A walkway, yes. Unconnected.
As the commission member said, if you attach it to both the existing structure and the newt structure, and you have a hardened surface sidewalk connecting the two.
I was planning on putting pavers in.
It's a pathway.
Correct.
What the, what the regulation is concerned about is connecting the two structures. So if there's a roof connecting the two structures with a surface that your wife can use, other than, you had mentioned in here, gravel, gravel would not be acceptable.
Gravel is required underneath to firm the base.
Right.
But I was planning on doing pavers from the-
But if you went in with a hard surface, you do not need a foundation for it. It's a walkway.
Okay. Okay, so it can be attached that way.
It can be attached, and it can be up to the front of the house if you would like.
Then no need for the variance, I'll attach it.
Jenny?
Does it, I haven't had a chance to review the file. Does it meet the side yard setback if he attaches it?
Yes.
He's got plenty of property.
Oh, I know he has plenty of property, I just didn't want to have-
He just needs to attach the buildings.
Have a phone call, because it didn't meet it. Thank you.
So, I'm going to give you a couple of options. You can withdraw your application and pursue connecting it and putting a walkway between the two. We can deny your application without prejudice, which means you can come back next month if you want to. Or you can continue on.
I would say, oh, no problem. I was planning on putting a walkway anyway, so I can withdraw the application for the variance.
We had thought you needed footings on the garage.
Right.
Not if it's a walkway.
Okay.
Okay, that'll work then.
You can pursue it, and we can deny it without prejudice, giving you the opportunity to come back next, next month.
Don't see any need to pursue it. I'll just attach. That'll work for us.
How soon do we need the thing made?
What was that?
What kind of time period do we need the attachment on? Because the garage is supposed to show up in two weeks.
Is there a timeframe between the garage showing up and the attachment going in?
The zoning enforcement officer would not be able to sign off on it until you attached it at the same time you have your building permit.
Okay, it's only about a 15-foot span, so that won't take me long.
Okay. Well, you'll need to show it on the building permit application.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought you checked on the attachment.
I thought I did too.
And one further mention. When you attach it, there should be no supporting, or no structural supports holding it up. It should be one roof connecting the two buildings.
Okay, so no extra support.
You don't need posts.
Even with snow?
So you have to have it designed so that you can span your 15 feet going from building to building.
And the snow's not going to make it fall down?
No. No, I can handle that.
And Jenny, the side yard, since you brought him up, the side yard is five feet, and 10 feet, and five on?
No, he has, if I'm not mistaken, you have over four acres?
Right, I'm talking about from his neighbor. From the property line in, he needs five feet or 10 feet.
There's about 30.
I'm not sure, Mary Ann. I didn't bring my-
If he attaches it-
Yeah, how far off?
He needs 15 feet.
15 feet.
There's about 30.
I just wanted to make sure you heard it.
Yes.
So, from your property line of your neighbor in, you're saying it's 15 feet.
If he doesn't attach it, he needs five feet.
Not a problem.
Right, but then he has to move it back.
But we can still do the 15?
Yes. Easily fall within that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Do they have to sign something?
Are you withdrawing it, or are you going to double-check with the building department?
Yeah, we'll draw, and I'll bring these up.
Jenny?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that we deny it without prejudice.
Okay. That way he can-
Allow him to pursue it with the building apartment, just in case there's something we're overlooking.
Okay.
I make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? So, so moved. For the record, motion made by Mo, seconded by Mary Ann. Vote was 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Jenny, can we give you these later?
Yes.
Madam Secretary.
Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals, ZBA 2014-09-02 Robert LaFlame, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing your name wrong. Applicant owner, 337 Elm Street, MAP 74, Lot 221, Zone R44. Request for a variance from the requirement that additions to the residential building on slab construction, or utilizing cellars with less than seven feet in height not exceed 50% of the original floor area of the building for the purpose of installation of an enclosed, attached, in-ground pool. EZO 4.10.2 dated this 17th day of September 2014, Mary Ann Turner, Secretary, Journal Inquirer, September 17th and September 24, 2014.
Let's wait for discussion.
Seven? Seven, eight?
And Madam Secretary, would you like to enter this into the record, please?
We were given, it looks like a 11-page PowerPoint slide presentation called Indoor Pool Project, Robert and Mary Lynn LaFlame, 337 Elm Street.
Okay. And name and address, please.
Name is Robert LaFlame, 337 Elm Street.
Mary Lynn LaFlame, 337 Elm Street.
Good evening, thank you for having us tonight.
Good evening.
We want to put an indoor pool attached to our house. It's been a lifelong dream of my wife, and something to have as a year-round recreational facility for us. So, without further ado, I'll go into this. Can you see it on the screen?
It will pop.
We have it now. Okay.
Yes.
So, the basic goal here is to construct in addition to an existing home built around 1947, to accommodate an 18-by-36-foot in-ground pool and utility spaces. Pool is being closed and attached to residents, providing year-round recreational use. Project consists of two parts. One is approximately 380 square feet addition to the rear of the house and garage, providing utility spaces, and the connection into the main living area, providing us areas for the pumps, filters, it's a bathroom, a laundry room, all the mechanical equipment will also be associated there. And then a 1,500-square-foot, 30-by-50-foot pool enclosure, holding the pool. The next couple of pages are the drawings, which I believe you already have in your packages. Reiteration of those. And the brief history of the, of the property. Original construction was in 1947, 1,400 square feet of living space, approximately 760 feet of basement. Previous owners enclosed a breezeway and made it part of the kitchen, adding 144 square feet. And I don't know if it's the same owner or not, added the garage. We've been working on this project for many years. It took us a long time to kindly pull the trigger and do this. We've been down here talking to building officials, talking to planning and zoning over the last couple of years, before we decided to finalize and go through with this. Had no idea that something, there was going to be any issues until this basement issue came up and bit us last week, or two weeks ago. Go through the zoning piece. We're in an R44 zone. The property is 148, 148,000 square feet, approximately 3.4 acres. As far as the front, the addition is completely behind the existing structure. Side is 35-foot required. We have 39 and 49 feet. Rear, 60 feet. We have 970 feet to the rear. 2.3% coverage as far as bulk use, and 21-foot high. So that's, go into the basement, because this whole issue came here. 768 square feet in the original house, it's a very small cape. Modification by previous owners, when they enclosed the breezeway, they gave us 144 square feet of 12-by-12-foot piece of crawl space. This project would add approximately 1,871 square feet of non-basement space. Result would be 270% ratio of non-basement to basement. So that would be the 300 and some odd square feet of utility spaces, plus the 1,500 square feet in the pool. That pretty much ends the presentation, part of the program. You know, indoor pools are not unheard of in, in Enfield. There are a few around. I have another exhibit of a house on Riverview Street, which in 1988 actually went through this exact same process, for the exact same reason. It should have been in your packages. If not, I have copies of it here.
We have the minutes and the assessment.
Yeah, then that's what I have too.
The application?
They have it all, yeah. It's the same documents that you had. So we're, you know, we're looking to say, okay, if we have to put a basement under this pool, it'd be excavations 20 feet deep below the water table, such things like that. And personally, I'd be afraid of a basement with 180, 180, 190,000 pounds of water, material, and other things above my head. You know, I feel that the, I can understand the intent of the ordinance to say, okay, we don't want slab houses, we don't want crawl spaces, because they're problematic and such things like that. We think this is something that the ordinance missed. And so we're asking you to grant us a variance to put our pool in.
Okay, questions of the board?
When I read through, you put your question, your answers to the questions on a separate sheet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What do you mean by re-regulation in question four?
I think it's a typo.
I think it's a typo.
Okay. In question five, you said the standard was 20 by 40, but you took 16 by 32, and you're specifically going to build an 18 by?
Oh, you know, I think that's a typo in here. It is 16, right Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was- I apologize.
It's okay.
That is, that is a second typo.
So the pool size-
The pool size is 16 by 32, yes.
By 32.
Apologize. It's a bit, it's a bit daunting to put this together.
That's okay.
Why no basement under the utility section?
We actually would like to put as much basement as we can there. It gets a, the builder has said, because we're up against the garage, and that has a frost wall there, if we're digging down seven or eight feet to put a basement in there, we have, we could run into some problems undermining the foundation of the garage and affecting that.
So we have to put the four-foot ledge in there?
Right. So there can, there can be up to four feet of basement. We've talked with the builder and talked with the architect about that, and they're okay with it. Personally, as I said, it's a small house. I miss my basement. I'll take as much as I can get in the project.
You probably saw a lot of footprints in your backyard yesterday.
I know Mr. Yarm visited on Saturday. I wasn't home yesterday. I apologize if I wasn't there to greet anybody.
Well, I was trolling all over the place. I was having a little trouble with this. I know you tried to mark it.
Yeah.
And I noticed the big excavation space. It was very difficult for me to get an understanding on that, on what you were, the way our rules are stated in our packet, we would prefer that we go out and we see the stakes, and we see orange lines, or paint, or something, because I could not really figure out where, are you building all the way out, all the way to the backyard?
No, no. If, if you looked at that area, we've always had a water runoff problem there. If you looked at that, it's about five feet from the house to the back there, that the depth that had excavation. So in the wintertime, we're always having to push snow away almost half the backyard to keep the water from running down into the house.
So what you did is you excavated the sand.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty, and you're not doing anything with that white building in the back.
The shed? No, that's the-
Right where it is? And so all you did was you just cut it out, and you were trying to re-grade it?
Trying to re-grade and level it off. In anticipation of this, again, we had, you know, no indication we were going to get bit. But if you stand back there at the corner of the garage, the building extends basically 15 feet to each side of you, and 50 feet straight ahead of you.
It was the one stake in the ground?
Yeah.
Heading that way?
Yeah, the lot lines there, on that section of Elm Street, do not run perpendicular to the road. They're off at some weird 40-degree angle almost, which is why, in the first page of the drawing there, you see the site, the site plan cutout in the bottom, shows it aligned with the property lines.
It has to be in an angle in order to meet the setbacks, because the lines run this way. So the house is this way, and the lot runs this way.
I have, I have property maps, if you'd like to see those, available for the board members.
If you feel, there's a need to see the map?
It never hurts to have all the information. Are you all? Is that the same one that's in our packet?
No. No, this is a drawing done by Mr. Palmberg.
We could just have like one here, and then one down there, and one to the chairman. They get a little cumbersome for the-
Mary Ann, while we pass them out, let's get them into the record.
So you can see the line where it says Elm Street, that is actually the road, and then you see-
Hold one second. This is a survey map from William Palmberg and son, dated May 4, 2012, for Robert and Mary Lynn LaFlame at 335 and 337 Elm Street. What's the 337?
At one time, I owned both 337- Um, at one time I owned both 335 and 337, so I had the map commissioned.
When we first lived in 335, the land behind 337 belonged to 335. Because of the way the, the land layout is. When we purchased 337, we had the land cut to make 335, the land behind 337 go with 337 rather than behind 335.
Again, because of the strange angle of the property, if you, if you look, you know, the property that's directly behind your house is really your neighbors. So we attempted to realign some of that. And
And this survey map shows that.
It does.
Right, that's, you're telling me what it is, what you ended up doing.
This is what it is, this is the map that was filed, yes, this is the way it exists today.
That's 337. That's 331.
So you have a big chunk to the right side, but the house is sitting square to the property, except you picked up?
No, it's not.
No.
No, it's not. The property runs diagonal. The road is getting too personal. The road is here, this is the house, this is 337 here.
Oh, there's where you're throwing me.
Yeah, it's, it's square to the road. It's square to the road.
Right.
But it is not square to the property line.
Okay, so we're looking at 337, 335 and 331, we're not even, this isn't you.
This is just
Okay.
Our references for the map. So the addition is right there in the corner of the garage.
I think it does this.
Ginny, could you give him the mic, we don't want to, you're gonna, not getting picked up, so hold on one second.
Yeah, that's where he gets the four acre.
Which is weird.
Okay, gotcha. He's got, it must be there, he's got two and three quarter acre here. That's just a strange lot.
We'll look at it.
All right, so what I'm saying is that, that's the addition right there.
Trying to follow that.
Right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Tailled off the back corner of the garage.
There's the garage.
Right, does this.
That's the old property line.
And this is the new property line.
And this is the new property, I'm sorry, I apologize. And, yeah, the new property line is here, the house is here, here's the garage, the addition is right there.
House, garage.
We got you.
You got it?
We got you.
You got it, and the addition is straight off, straight off along that line, half and half.
Coming across this way.
Right, it's, it's, I can borrow this, it's right there. And that's actually shown on the print.
Right.
Pepper mark for that.
Leave it to the land use attorney.
For years I've tried to research why those property lines are like that, I could never come up with a decent answer. No, sir.
Questions the board?
Marianne, were you done or, you have more?
I'm gonna wait.
Kai, Mo, you're up.
The only thing I, I'm looking for what the hardship is.
What the hardship is?
Yeah.
So you're, you're asking me to either construct a full basement underneath this pool to a depth of 20 feet and a very, very large engineering problem, or disconnect it from my house where it becomes an accessory structure, but then I have to go outdoors to use a portion of my indoor house. Or, the only other thing I can see is I have to put a 3,000 square foot addition to my house so that I can have a 1,500 square foot addition with no basement. You know, the minutes from, from the Riverview property, you know, the intent is, is, I think the intent is not there to cover an in-ground pool?
You're, you're probably right, it's, it's not there to cover the in-ground pool. I'm also stuck on another zoning regulation. Because what we haven't looked at yet is what our regulation is for swimming pool. And our regulations, in our zoning regulations, it says that a pool may be installed as an accessory, as an accessory structure. We're not allowed to put them in the building. It says in our regulations 4.30.16
Those papers I have.
That our regulation, that a swimming pool may be added as an accessory structure.
Um, we do have cases where
Where they've been allowed?
Yes.
And that's why he's here.
But, right, so what I'm looking for, but first of all, he's not asking for a variance on that.
On what?
On that regulation of swimming pools. He's asking for a variance on a regulation for basements. But if a swimming pool according to our regulation says that it needs to be an accessory structure, then we also need to vary that regulation.
Yes, yes, sir, but, you know, we, we've worked with planners in this town over the previous years, and no one has ever indicated that, I, I understand we could talk
I'm, I'm just reading the regulation.
You know, we could talk linguistics here, and may does not mean always mean has to.
What's, what's the name of the lady that told us that the problem was because we needed a basement under the pool, which is why we came back with that, because that's what she said.
Tracy.
Tracy said
Denied this applica, denied this building permit because we didn't have a basement, that was the only reason given for denying it.
Okay.
So that's why we came back with what we came back with.
Can we, can we back up a minute?
Absolutely.
I know you've been planning this for a while, so can you help us walk through that a little bit? You said you've been working with the planners?
Yes.
We've only had one planner in 19 years.
And it was Jose.
Jose.
Okay, you worked with Jose?
We worked with Jose, we brought him preliminary drawings.
Okay.
Showed him to him, Barbara was there, every, and we, we got the building officials.
And the building department was there.
Building department, we came in, they came in, looked at the prop, at the preliminary plans and said, yep, this looks really nice, can I use it? I said, if you let me build it.
Wait one second, one second.
The, the problem is, the building department isn't going to go back and look at zoning regulation.
I understand that, but the planner was in the room.
So our regulation 4.30.16 in A says, swimming pools may be installed in any district as an accessory structure.
Yep.
What's this one here? Indoor swimming?
I have to ask, I need to back you up.
Then if we look at 10 point, is this, that's a state building code.
Hold on, I want to ask you, I want to back you up one more time.
Yes.
When you were working with, with the building department and Jose and the planning office, and you told us that you realotted the lot, you re, you kind of moved property from one to the other piece of property. Did you go in front of planning and zoning for that lot change?
He didn't need to. He didn't need to.
We didn't need to because it meant
It all, everything's conforming.
We actually took, we actually took 337 and made it conforming to the, to lot, to the lot size rather, because before it was only
We had one conforming and one non-conforming lot, and they were turned into two conforming lots.
Okay.
Because 337 initially was non-conforming because it was just that little space you see in the front.
Mm-hmm.
With that little jog on it.
When I read through the minutes of 1988, and I, I, the issue that sits here is that they did not come in with a hardship. And you have to understand, and as the chairman spoke earlier, the zoning variance is off the hardship of the property, not because of a financial issue, because you want it, just strictly there. And in, in the minutes that were attached, there's, they did not show a hardship, in, in my interpretation of the, I
In the, in the minutes, it clearly says that.
It clear, it's, it doesn't say what the hardship was.
Do you, do they have all of it, Brian?
I, I agree with you there that the hardship is not written in the minutes, that's not.
It's in the application, do you have the application?
Forget that, forget that. They determined it did, I don't, I can't speak for that commission.
Right, and neither can we, that's the problem.
And I think the only thing they spoke about is that it would not make
So, so
Let's say, say sense to put a basement under an in-ground pool.
Right, so we're here tonight, under advisement of the planning and zoning department in this town. We did exactly what we've been asked to do. This has been, this has been done several times in the past in this town. We're trying, you know, we're trying to follow the rules and the regulations here.
And I, I agree with you on that, you're trying to follow it, and that's why I'm pointing this out. Somebody I believe may have overlooked this on you, and it's going to cause a problem.
So it says in the regulation that indoor pools are not
It says swimming pools may be installed in any district as an accessory to the dwelling.
Right, does it say only as an accessory to a dwelling?
It doesn't say that it can be part of the dwelling, and what we've always done in this town, in what we know as practice, if it's not in here, then it's not in allowed use. So it says that you, you may install a pool in any district in this town, whether it be an R44, R30, it doesn't matter what it is, in any district you may install one, as an accessory to the dwelling, not part of the dwelling. So, even if you were to get the variance tonight, now you, you're stuck because you're fighting against the regulation that's here. And why somebody didn't give it to you and why it wasn't, I don't have those answers for you. But it's clearly a regulation that we have to follow.
I have a question. If that's the case, then I believe that the town owns multiple in-ground enclosed pools, the health club down on Enfield Street does, and so do Bigelow Commons. If none of them applied for a variance, shouldn't all of them be receiving citations from the zoning enforcement officer?
Jimmy, we can't look at what happened in the past, we're a board that looks at what's in front of us today.
I understand, we look at what's in front of us today, but what that gets at is to a potential issue of inequitable enforcement.
No.
And it also, it, it, it also gets a past practice, which is, is something that we can and should consider.
According to the laws in Connecticut, we are not bound by past practice.
We're not bound by past, past practice, but that doesn't mean that we can't consider it as persuasive precedent, and there's a difference between the two.
I'm sorry I have to go by what my regulations state today.
One of the problems, James, is that if we deny a variance, we're very specific, or if we grant a variance, we're very specific as to the reason why. The board in 1988 just said that the applicant presented a hardship. They didn't define that hardship. We have no clue. The chair of that board also said that he wanted to go swimming in that pool in January.
Right.
Ginny, through the chairman, to the liaison, health tracts, Bigelow and schools are different than residential property, and they would be under different rules.
Correct.
Yes.
But, but where would, where are the pools there covered under? Which regulation?
You'll need to read the zoning book, Jim, and I'm looking for it, so take a minute and go see if you can find it.
I didn't look for those regulations, because again, we're, that wouldn't pertain to what we're dealing with.
Right.
We're dealing to a residential dwelling. So I only went through to look for zoning regulations pertaining to what's in front of me. So even if we find the regulation pertaining to all those other buildings, it's apples and oranges. I'm trying to help the applicant with, with what's in front of us.
But I, I think that what this illustrates, and perhaps I'm wrong at this assessment, but what I think this illustrates, and again, this is my opinion, I think that the applicant was misdirected to us for a variance by folks at the town hall, that probably if these issues are out there, maybe they need a text change, maybe they should have been directed to P and Z for a text change instead of in front of us for a variance. And obviously, we're trying to deal with what's in front of us right now, but this is not the first time that things like this have happened, where people have been directed at us by town staff to get a variance, when probably the solution to their problem was a, a text change. And I have some sympathy, you know, if somebody isn't an expert in these areas, oh, we're doing what the town people told us to do. And so, just, I, I want to note my irritation on the record that, that, that they were directed to us and they probably should have been directed to P and Z.
And I sympathize with that, but I can't break the law.
I understand, I'm not saying that.
James, as you well know, we've had situations in the past where planning and zoning has written the regulations and we enforce those regulations.
As, we're constrained by what they write.
If we see that those regulations can be improved, we go into a workshop with planning and zoning, and we discuss those. Unfortunately, we're not at that stage today. We've kind of got the, the cart before the horse.
I understand.
Excuse me, a member of the audience would like to make a comment, is that allowed at this time?
Not until I open it up to the public.
Okay, thank you.
You said you looked at, you understood that you have an accessory structure, and that our accessory structures are not attached to the house, and you've looked at that as an option?
We have looked at that, and, you know, I suppose we could, let's not, we could, we could do something to say, okay, let's build this as an accessory structure, in which case, we don't have this problem here tonight, and that's, and then we have an addition on the house, which is something else entirely, and we don't connect them. And then we come back at some later time and say we want to connect them. Is that, you know, that's, that's
That was done
Not really in the spirit of what we're trying to do here, we're trying to be full disclosure.
The rule won't change. At this moment, per these regulations, the rule won't change for you to come back, say I built A, I built B, and now I want to attach them, the rule's not going to change. Unless the rule changes, then you can go back, and you may not even come in front of us.
Yeah, so if I understand this correctly, what Mr. LaRosa is telling us is that because it's not specifically allowed, it's denied. Is that correct?
No, no.
I'm not saying it's denied, no.
No, no, I mean, it's, it's prohibited by regulation.
By regulation.
It's prohibited by regulation because the regulation does not specifically allow it.
What I'm pointing out is, on top of the variance that you're in front of us for, you may need another variance, is what I'm pointing out.
I understand that, but your, the basis, the basis for that is
I wasn't there in your meeting.
But the basis for that is, it's not specifically allowed, therefore it's specifically disallowed.
Correct.
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to sit back until I open it up to the public.
Even though that I'm supposed
I'm sorry?
Brian?
Yeah, just, don't, don't piss him off.
I'll give you an opportunity to speak.
Okay, so what's the advice of the board, is there any?
I can't give you any. Open it up and
Unfortunately, the board can't give you the advice you're looking for. Based on the information we have in front of us, and based upon the current regulations as they stand in place, that's what we have to base our opinion on, and that's what our vote would be based on. If we see that there is a extreme gray area to this particular situation, we can bring it to planning and zoning, to better define what it is that this regulation needs to say, which we've done on previous applications, not dealing with the subject, but in other
Do you have a, a time of construction in your, that you're
Well, originally, we were targeting completion in December.
Starting in
So starting, you know, considering we were starting when we thought we were good to go, which was about a month ago.
I understand.
You know, ideally, ideally, foundation would like to go in before it gets too cold.
Right.
Right?
If there was a way that I could see you doing the project like you just saw with the last one, I mean, that, we're here to help you, we're not here to just, you know, be bullies and say, no, you can't do what you want. I'm just pointing out things that may have been overlooked.
You can see my frustration by being, you know, what's, what's, you know, being surprised at this hour with something like that.
And I don't blame you, I don't blame you. But again, our board has to look at all
We've been trying for years to get this done.
But when we talk But when we talked to Tracy, what she said was, everything looks good, and I'm having... The only problem I'm having with this is the fact that the basement requirement does... The basement doesn't meet that requirement in the code. She said, that's the only problem I'm having with this. She called us like at 5:00 on a Thursday night. She said to him, I gotta think this over. We talked about the Jose thing. She said, do you have anything in writing from Jose? We said, no, it was conversations, repeated conversations, down in the planning office in with the zoning office, with the building officials. And so she said, well, I gotta think this over. So then she called him Friday night at like 6:00 and said, well, you don't meet the basement requirement, and without that, you can't go forward. She said, that is the only thing that is stopping me from letting this go.
Mr. Chairman, is there a way to postpone this and get a final decision from PCC on this regulation?
We can get a motion going.
I mean, I'm willing to make the motion if it's feasible to do that, but I'm reading the regulation as it reads right now, and unless they say otherwise, that's what it is.
Ginny, any comment?
No. I was thinking... The only thing that I was thinking is not trying to get around anything, but if indeed it would be considered an accessory structure, they can be quite close to the house without...
Five feet.
Right.
Five feet. We made that regulation just two years ago.
Really?
Right. It's in the...
Because of decks and stuff like that. So it's a five-foot separation.
It's in the definitions.
Peter and I went to PCC to get the regulation on that.
That was for attachment decks.
It was, but it was making accessory structures a five-foot...
Ah, I apologize.
It's all part of the same regulation.
Could their hardship be they were misinformed?
Hang on a minute. Where do you get that?
I don't.
Wait. Where do you get the...
I'd have to look it up.
Well, I'm looking at the definition.
Right. It was in a regulation. It wasn't... I don't believe it was a definition. We had it... We wrote a regulation, correct?
No, I thought we wrote a definition.
Are you looking at the definition of a swimming pool?
No.
Accessory... Oh, okay. Okay.
Accessory building or use. A building or use in addition to the principal building or use, which is clearly subordinate to and clearly incidental to, and located upon the same lot as the principal building... We're together.
It is.
Okay. Structures which provide access to the principal building, including but not limited to decks, landings, porches, et cetera, et cetera, are considered part of the principal structure and shall not be considered accessory structures. The zoning board of appeals shall have no authority to vary this amendment...
Right. We wrote it so that we couldn't vary it. It is what it is.
Shall not be considered accessory structures.
When it's attached.
Right. When it's attached to the principal building.
Ginny, Planning and Zoning has a meeting on Thursday, but we wouldn't be able to talk to them.
They have public participation.
Well, and here's the other... They could have a special meeting than the regular meeting.
No.
No.
It's not...
Can't call it as emergency?
No.
This is an emergency.
And you can't do it under public participation?
Could they go before them?
They probably can't get on the agenda.
No, she's saying can they go under public participation?
They could only talk under public participation, but they can't act.
But they wouldn't be able to act on something like that. That's...
No, but they could give a indication of...
But all it would do is we'd have to...
It would... We have to... The way it works is, we have to ask them to look at it, and then they will give us a response. If they ask them to look at it, we're not going to get that response. It's just not the way it works.
Well, I think if that's the way the group is leaning, you can carry it to the next meeting, and I think that they can request an extension.
Before I make that motion, I'd like to hear from the audience.
Could I just... Could I just ask, out of curiosity?
Yes.
How tall the structure is?
Twenty-one feet.
That was a good question.
Yeah.
Isn't that over the height?
Yes.
It could only be 12.
Accessory structures can be from the existing ground to the middle of the roof.
Twelve.
Twelve feet.
But a 30-foot wide building, it's kind of tough to...
Oh, no.
Have a slope like that.
Unless you want to shovel snow off the roof.
But again, it would go back to yet another variance.
Well, no, because that's permitted.
What's permitted?
Thirty-five feet is the height of the structure.
Right. If it's the principal building.
When it's attached.
If it's attached, right.
When it's attached.
And it's not 35 feet, it's 35 feet or two and a half stories.
Okay. So it's a single-story building, 21 feet tall.
The gentleman sitting in the office, in the audience, what is the relationship?
He's our builder.
He's your builder?
Pool installer.
Pool installer.
Okay. Then I'd like to hear from him at this point. Name and address, sir.
Brian Giuliano, 6 Ridgewood Road, Summers, Connecticut. I'm probably missing something. If we're going for the variance of the... Just the whole deal with not having the basement, is it P&amp;Z's decision on the accessory structure discrepancy?
No. What would happen is, for sake of conversation, let's say you got your variance. Then he'd have to go in with the application, he'd have to go through the whole site plan review, go through the building department, go through everything, and what this board is saying, most likely, somebody's going to pick up the fact on the other variance. And then you're stuck, because now you're going to have to come back, go through the whole application process again.
Under the pretense of what they've been told by the people that they've met with, and the fact that everything seems so positive to Planning and Zoning, and Jose, is that... Would that be at our own risk, where if we just ask for the variance on the basement, we take it from there, understanding that that could get picked up?
But the person that's going to pick it up is sitting here listening to us point it out.
Yeah. A couple more questions that I did have about it.
3.30.7.
For one, I don't... I hear it, and I understand what it's saying, I guess. The only advantage that I have is that we've, for many, many years, decades, done pools indoors in all the towns, and I understand we're in Enfield, and we have done... But I would imagine that they have similar rules. You know, you'd think that somewhere, somebody in Western Mass or Northern Connecticut has something similar to what you read, and we've never had any issues with that before on any other applications, and we're talking dozens of indoor pools. That's was the only reason why I got a little antsy that I wanted to speak, because you do something, you'd see patterns, and this isn't one that I've seen in business. I've never had an issue. The basement thing I get, but the thing with the accessory structure, I'm having a... I'm questioning that, that's all.
Well, one of the things that I can tell you is that this is one of the few towns in Connecticut that has the regulations on basements and slabs. There aren't a lot of towns that have that regulation, and that's our primary focus tonight.
Yep. That I understand. So I guess then my final thing is, the fact, what we've had to do in other towns before is things like alarm the doors and things like that to put the towns or whatever at ease. It's because it's not like it's in their living area, per se. It's... There's a door, you know what I mean? And they've put stipulations for us where we've had to alarm the doors and various things in the past. So when the door opens, it has a different audible tone than any other door that might be alarmed, to tell the people of the house, hey, that's a door that has entrance into the pool area. And I don't know if one of the reasons for that is a safety thing, or I...
That's the building code.
The state building code... The state building code says, on that spec, Brian, is that the pool should be equipped with a powered safety cover, or doors with direct access to the pool should be alarmed, and other means of protection such as self-closing doors. So this pool has a automatic safety cover, one that closes automatically, and you can walk on it. So we've complied with that part of the state building codes.
Right. That's safety.
Yes.
I don't know why they made that regulation. The only reason I pointed it out is so that you guys don't go through the process and then get stuck again, and now come back again. It's... I'm being very thorough for you. It's in the regulation. Chairman said that we're allowed to... If you guys want to table it, give us some time to go to PCC and verify that that was the... That's their intent, their interpretation of that regulation. We can do that. If they come back and say, no, you know what? It's allowed, then by all means, that, you know, I won't look at that regulation. But our regulation right now, I have to look at it.
Okay. But can I ask you something? Because you just pointed out to Brian that that would be Ginny.
Ginny's not PCC. She's not the Planning and Zoning Commission.
She's a zoning...
She's a zoning enforcement.
I don't know what she is.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Planning and Zoning Commission is the one that writes and governs these regulations. Our board enforces and follows. It's there. I can't just turn a blind eye. If you'd like, I can get... We can get a better definition, but I can't...
But that's not what we're in front of. That one... I understand that one, Mo. We're here about basements.
We're here about putting a basement...
That's right.
But the whole thing goes together.
But on the flip side, looking at it from a practical standpoint, are you going to put a basement under a pool? And when the ZBA in 1988 looked at it, and I don't know who those people were, I didn't recognize the names, but I assume one of them was a zoning enforcement officer who said that, you know, it didn't make sense to put a basement under the pool.
I don't think the zoning enforcement officer went to meetings in the 80s.
I don't know who the gentleman was.
Town planner. Greg Chiara, the town planner, was present at the meeting.
Okay, it was the town planner. Didn't make sense, which it doesn't make sense, but it is the regulation. And it may be up to us to bring it to the attention of Planning and Zoning and say, this doesn't make sense. What's the interpretation?
Well, I would think common sense plays a part in the zoning regulations. I'm not saying that anyone is above compliance, but as you say, if something came before me as the zoning enforcement officer, and it made totally no sense, I would be reluctant to deny it.
But let's go the other way, okay? Because we always have to look at the big picture.
Yes.
These folks want to put in a swimming pool. We say, that's fine, even though this reg doesn't fit it, fine. They move out in five years, somebody fills that pool in. We've... I mean, the variance is there forever and ever and ever. It needs to fit all of our regulations, or we need to see if we can exempt something.
I had that conversation very unofficially because of your concerns.
Right, because the pool could become a dance hall. Not that they would, but I mean, you know, they may not want to live here forever, and...
So I know we're here for the basement, but I'm looking at all of our regulations to a project and saying, let's make sure this is what it is.
Excuse me, can I add something to that? As Bob said...
You don't dance.
As Bob said, we've been thinking about this for a long time. We have no desire to leave that house once we sink this much money into that building to a house that isn't worth the...
The way a variance works, it runs forever with the land.
Do you know High Street?
Oh, yes.
Do you know the properties on High Street?
I was born and raised in Enfield, so I know.
Okay. There's a house in the middle of High Street that's allowed to own a goat from now to eternity. There's no front lawn, no back lawn, but from now to eternity, they can own a goat.
Because of the variance.
Because the variance is given.
Sure. We understand that. And, you know, you mentioned that filling in the swimming pool, somebody could be a dance hall. So could my garage.
Bob, there was another one on Abbey Road, 293 Abbey Road, and they went for a variance for the basement.
Is that the one in 88? Or is this a different one?
Seventy-six.
That was even earlier.
I don't have that.
We have a copy of that if you'd like.
If you do, can I... Are they the minutes?
The minutes are not... We're not available, right, Ginny?
I don't know.
We couldn't scare those up.
Barbara, in the office, in your office, we were looking for them on Friday, and she went downstairs to the vault, and then she ran upstairs, and they couldn't find the minutes. It had a weird number on it, and they were looking for them, and they never came up with them.
No. They never came up with the minutes. We weren't able to find them in this building.
It was... Was it this one? That's really...
No, that's not it.
Maurice, do you think that that is a zoning reg, correct? With the accessory structure?
Yes.
My feeling on this whole thing is that we came for the whole deal with the basement. I understand your advice. I got to suspect between my office, meeting with them and pulling the permits, and all the work that they have done, that Planning or Zoning would have mentioned something to them somewhere before we got this deep in.
It goes to...
The chairman. Handle it. The chairman handle it.
What happens within the town offices, we have no control over. How they address the public and the information they give the public is not something that we can control.
But I think it's promising that no mention has been made of it. Like we talked about earlier, if something came in front of her and, you know, common sense plays a little bit of role in it. I... You know, and again, I'm just... Ultimately, it's their decision, I guess, but I'm feeling good about the fact that nobody mentioned anything, and that I've never run into it in 20 years.
Question for the chair. If we were to pursue, like he's saying, and only voted on the basement aspect, and they take the chance that they'd have to come back before us for another variance, is there anything wrong with that?
That's an option.
The problem with that is, the project is coming to us for a pool. Our job would then be to look at the pool.
The room of the pool.
So the first thing I did, okay, they want to put in a pool. What's the regulation on a pool? That's it. So yeah, we can look at the basement aspect, but if we're giving them a variance on not having a basement because they want to put in a pool, we have to do our due diligence and make sure that they're allowed to put in a pool.
We understand that, Mr. LaRosa, and thank you for finding that out. However, you know, we've been working on this for several years, and no mention of it, and we wish I'd gotten a mention of it when you noticed it. That would have been... That would have been great. But unfortunately, I understand that's not your position. Back on 293 Abbey Road, there was no variance. The building permit was signed off with nothing.
Whether the application is for...
No, it's only the cover.
On addition to a building, or whether it's for a pool, at this point, I don't think matters. What matters is, do they meet the regulation on basement space? Or do they meet the regulation on the required basement space?
But we're looking... The reason that you would get the... The reason anybody here on this board would give the variance for not you having a basement... here on this board would give the variance for not you having a basement, is because there's no sense to have a basement under a pool.
Right. Agreed.
The only reason...
But that's, that's what they're seeking.
Right, but the only way they can have the pool is if it's detached according to the regulation.
And then they can build around it.
That's...
Mr. Chairman?
And if they...
So in the, in the plans given to me to add a pool on these plans, it violates the regulation.
But that's, that's not the application in front of us.
That's correct.
The application in front of us is basement space for a pool. But forget for the pool.
A building.
Basement space.
No, it says a pool.
That's the application.
It can't be for building space.
What's, what would happen is, as we've advised the applicants...
Right here, attached in-ground pool.
And with Ginny sitting at our meeting, they will need to pull a building permit, they'll have to go through all the different boards and commissions again to get approval. Ginny is well aware at this point that it does not meet the regulation of a pool structure if it's attached to the building. Red flag is going to go up in her office, and this applicant will be back before us.
Or could they be back before P&amp;Z for a text change?
If there's a text change by planning and zoning...
I guess that's what I'm asking, is there any way we can rule on the basement variance tonight and allow them...
That's all that they're here for. That's all they're here for.
And I think Mr. LaRosa's noticed, I, I get it, but I think we strained slightly off topic of why we're here for the basement and understanding you've, you forewarned us. It's like a proceed at your own risk. I, I do get that part.
I, I'm going further than that, because I believe anything they put in their application is what we're here to discuss. They applied for a variance for a pool.
And, and you're correct, and we are discussing it.
Yeah.
And that discussion is being noted by the zoning enforcement officer sitting...
Then I've got nothing else.
Next to us.
Are you the zoning enforcement officer?
I'm not sure, but if indeed it's someone else, I will, they will become aware of this meeting.
Let's say our liaison is now aware, and if and when a new zoning enforcement officer is appointed, it is, I would think, her obligation to inform them of this meeting.
So I want to be, I want to be very clear then. We're looking to vary, put it, whether or not they need a basement under a building.
Under the structure that they're coming before us with. So...
And, and I agree with that, and it's, we have to go with the information that we've had, you know, coming into this meeting, and that's, we feel, I feel strongly that if there was any red flags, we would have been alerted to them in one of our dozen trips to the town hall.
We probably don't disagree.
Okay.
The application, Mr. Chairman, and I, and I just want to, we're all just wanting to make clearer than mud here. It says, "Application for construction of an enclosed in-ground pool." To meet, let's see, "Proposed construction meets the bulk use and setback requirements, but needs an exception of, to the 50% basement requirement." They're being specific.
And they're looking for the exception to the 50% basement requirement. If it would make the board, I can understand the board's concern. We have the right to revise the approval or denial. We can make a revision to the text, if this is approved, that this is not an approval for anything of the pool slash accessory structure, for the regulations pertaining to a pool.
Would you also be meaning that we're, when, if, when we move forward, that the variance is only regarding not having a basement under an in-ground pool?
Yes.
So that...
It can be very specific.
If we, there was the, if we were to vote in favor of that, saying you don't have a basement under this structure, the structure could change if it's not a pool. So we need to be clear that we're talking about the pool.
But we're not, we're not granting a variance for the regulation pertaining to a pool.
Right, because they're not in front of that.
We will, you pull out, you pull the regulation number...
Right.
And we'll identify it.
Right, I'm with you.
I, I just personally feel that's up to the town hall. To, I feel, in my experience in the past of doing these and coming in front of the boards, and I agree with what Mr. Yarm says, it, they frequently do put little memos to try to cover their tracks in a way, to make sure that, that they're not misunderstood or misconstrued as to a possible violation of a zoning law.
Just...
Because what they came to us about is wrong, because it does not meet the bulk requirement.
That's up to the town.
That's the 293 Abbey Road, building permit.
For the record, we have a building permit dated October 2nd, 1975, for 292 Abbey Road. And it says, it's a 12, 1,239 square foot pool in-house, in-ground. I'm, I, I can only assume...
There was, there was no variance or anything needed. It was just signed.
But I can't assume what in-house means. May not be attached, I don't have anything to go by.
It, it says in, in A, "New building swimming pool, indoor swimming pool, under D, proposed use."
But it doesn't say attached to the dwelling.
But it is attached, if you look at the drawings.
I don't know that.
Um, do we have a drawing of that? Bring, bring up the website.
And again, I wasn't there during that meeting as to why they would have been granted something.
But it was, it, from the building permit, it wasn't.
But we may not have had a pool regulation back then.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I don't have the answer for you.
Yep, we understand that. Has it been quiet tonight? I guess.
Okay.
I might, might have something in our, in our discussion.
Can we talk about the 50% part?
Pardon me?
50%, which is part of what we're here for, but shall not exceed 50% of the original floor area of the building excluding garages, porches, and breezeways. So we're talking about the new addition of the house inclusive of this new structure, right?
Right.
So are we over the 50%?
Oh, most definitely.
Most definitely. The, the original footprint of the house, again, as I said, it's a small cape, 768 square feet. The addition, the connector in the pool house, total 1,871 square feet. That would amount to, of granting a variance of, instead of 50%, would be 270%.
But if the, if the pool was not attached, then that 50% goes away?
Yes.
So another reason. How do we take them apart?
I don't want to rain on anybody's parade, but did you see the inspection record at the backside of the building permit?
On the paper we just received?
I don't know why, but it was stamped abandon. I'm not saying they didn't get the approval, I'm just saying that...
That's '03.
Yeah, so I'm guessing they didn't call for their final inspection, and then this, this just got abandoned.
Does that mean they didn't build it?
No, 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 no.
It's there, if you look in the assessor's database, it'll show.
You can build, it's like when you get a shed, if you don't call for the final inspection, if you do a detached garage, we've had this conversation before.
So this must be detached.
I, no, no, I didn't say that. I just meant that unless it's the principal structure, when you do something, you don't necessarily, they don't necessarily go out to look at it without you calling them.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. If it was the principal structure, the principal dwelling, the building department would have had to go out there to offer up a CO.
No, no. I just signed off on one for 2007 that were two attached decks and a swimming pool that never got its final closeout, because they never called for an inspection. And they were selling the house, so now they have to get it taken care of.
So you went out and inspected and then closed it?
I signed off on the building permit because it had already been approved by the former zoning enforcement officer. It already had...
So you didn't get your certificate of compliance that we make them have?
That one just came through today, correct. Never mind.
Okay, let's move on. Any, any other questions of the applicant?
No. I'm telling you, it's critical with this.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's enough.
You may have a seat in the audience. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against it? I'm going to keep the public hearing open just for a little while, just in case. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mary Ann.
Hate it when you do that.
Second? Seconded by Andrew. Go ahead, Mo.
If we're not looking at this as a pool, we're looking at this simply as putting a basement under a building or not, what's the hardship? If we don't look at it as a pool, because if we look at it as a pool, we have to look at the pool regulation. So if this is a building with a basement, what's the hardship? If we look at it as a pool, the hardship is, it's kind of ridiculous to put a basement under a pool. But if it's, we're looking at a basement under a building, where's the hardship?
As part of our consideration, and as part of the application, we need to factor in, in our decision, that it is a pool. All the regulations that go towards a pool at this time is not part of this application.
Okay, so if we were to word it, and I'm, I'm with you, I'm flexible enough, if we were to word it as such, that the variance for disallowing a basement under a pool does not in any way grant them permission to put in a pool unless otherwise meeting regulations?
Meaning all pool regulations.
So that way there, when they go to put the pool in, they're going to have to meet the pool regulation.
Correct.
It's, I don't want to play, well, maybe it won't get through, maybe, our board is here to be upstanding to these regulations. I don't want to try to slide a regulation past somebody.
Understood.
Okay? Because we're not doing our job if we do. If, if, if we show that we're not ethical by trying to slide something through, we don't belong here.
Mr. Chairman, could we condition our variance that it would be for the use of the pool?
For the use of the pool. Which I think what Mo is saying, he just wants to make sure that all other regulations pertaining to a pool in the town of Enfield are met.
Right.
We will vary the need for basement underneath a pool, as long as all other regulations pertaining to pools are met.
Okay.
But that would also include accessory structures. We would need, they'd need to discuss, first they'd have to get through the pool part, and what a pool is in regards to the town zoning. I mean...
No, it does not, it doesn't pertain to accessory structures because they are attaching it, because if they, if it did pertain to accessory structures, they wouldn't need a basement.
Right, but that would mean it's not attached.
That's why the property would be varied.
Right, for the basement, if, they would may, more likely after the fact, have to come back or somehow figure it out, that if they want the pool attached to the new structure...
They need another variance.
They need another variance. Or they need to affect...
Which is, which is what both Andrew...
And Mo.
And Mo are saying.
Okay. Okay.
We're gonna, we're, we're...
Focusing on this one.
We're focusing on the need to put a basement...
Under a pool.
Under this pool.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. Charlie?
Well, I agree that it should be worded the way Andrew said, because I really feel like they were misled by a town official.
But we can't, we can't, even if the town official misleads them, we are bound by regulation. I feel bad if somebody from the town misled them. But in court, that won't hold any, any water for us. These, this is, if, if the judge says to you, Charlie, what did you base your decision on? Well, I based it on the fact that somebody misled, well, that, I have these in front of me. This is what I have to uphold.
Well, I still think it should, the wording should get, should not get any stronger than condition variance only for the pool. I would just let it go with that.
I, I think we need to have something in there that states that they need to make sure that their pool meets all regulations. Because we, we as a board right now, we all are aware that there's a pool regulation. Again, it's not going to be ethical if we turn a blind eye to the fact that there's a pool regulation. It's, it's public information now, it's been put in a hearing aspect. It's there. You can't deny it's there, you can't turn a blind eye to it. It, it has to be upheld.
What you're, what you're not saying is that the applicant, in this application, wants to put a pool there. The regulation says if he puts a pool there, he needs a basement under it.
That's the ones in front of us.
What we're saying is, does that make sense? Does he really need to put a basement under his pool if he wants to put a pool there?
I understand.
That's what the property is being varied for.
What I'm asking for is a condition. We have the right to condition things. What I'm asking for is giving a variance to not need a basement under a pool...
That is the issue.
With the condition that he meets all...
Well, as Andrew, repeat again.
I, I said that it would be for the use of a pool. It's not, it's not for, not a use variance, it's just for a pool in that structure.
But the way...
So I think you could put language in that says that we're not giving a use variance, if that makes it clear.
But that wording, I don't think it does, because they're coming in specifically for a use. So I'm just looking for a condition that says that they will meet all regulations for the use they're wanting to use it for.
And I'm saying that they're not in front of us for all different uses and that it's very clear for anyone who's watching us that there are additional regulations they may need to forego. They may have, when they hit the building department.
If we don't write it, we've learned this from the past, if we don't write it, it won't happen. Have we not known that on this board?
I don't think it's, we're not saying we're not going to write it. I think what we want to do is move along so the applicant knows where we're, we can come up with the correct verbiage that makes us happy as a board.
That's fine.
Okay.
We left the hearing open.
Any further comments?
Just one final comment, you know, first of all, thank you for taking the time. This is, didn't, nobody expected to be this drawn out. However, I do.
There's nothing, you should see some of them.
Well, you know, I appreciate you being here and putting in the effort and trying to work with us. We've been trying to work with the town for a long time. In my opinion, that the, the least, and I don't want to use the word regulation because it's, it's not the, not the term that I'm thinking of. It's the only word that comes to mind, is generally the best. If you try to write everything down to every situation, then you're going to have invariably, you're going to have a situation come up tomorrow, or the next day, or the next week, that, oh gee, we didn't think of that one. So my, in my entire working career, it's always been to lean towards doing the least. And that's what I encourage you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone to speak in favor or against the application? Public hearing is hereby closed. Okay, we have a motion by Mary Ann to approve. We have a second by Andrew. We've had our discussion. All those in favor?
Before you go there.
Go ahead.
I'm not exactly sure what we're approving, or we're going to approve it with a condition. And do we say that, or do we vote first, then the condition? How's it normally work, Mr. Chairman?
We, if you would like to do a condition at this point before we vote on it, we will vote as, that condition as part of our vote.
I think we need to go in that order.
Okay.
So that we don't make an error.
Okay. And let's do a revision with a condition.
I have some words, I'm not sure they're the right words, but I'll read you what I wrote. We. We, and I'm just going to give you the high points and we'll figure it out, all right? We said regulations this evening are not regarding the pool as part of the application. And the variance is for disallowing a basement under a pool. It does not grant them to install the pool, I mean, any additional regulations. So the one thing we did is condition the variance only for the pool and all other regulations must be met when they go back into building permit. And it would be the use of the pool in that structure. We wanted to make sure that we, I'm disjointed here, but you get, those are the notes I took. Because I was having trouble figuring out how I make a sentence.
Okay, so the, the.
What you're saying is the variance will be only for the pool in this structure and the pool will meet all the regulations.
I think it's the application regarding the cellar hole or.
How about if we say, if approved, the variance is granted with the condition that a basement is not required under the present application. However, any regulations pertaining to pools must be met and is not part of this approval. That's the wording I was looking for. Okay, what did I just say?
I'm trying to get it down. Play that back.
Did you get that?
Regulations pertaining to pools.
If approved.
If approved, the variance is not required under the present application.
Hold it. If approved, the variance.
Is not required under the present application.
Is not required. A basement. Under the current application.
I think I would add in there, so long as the pool use is maintained.
Well, we had a second.
The current application.
Yeah, because we had a second sentence there. We said something, regulations pertaining to pools must be met per the town of Enfield zoning rules.
Okay, but we have approved the variance is not required basement under the current application.
All other.
All other. Regulations.
Pertaining to pools.
Pertaining to pools. I don't think we have to say that, Andrew, because it's in the application.
Okay.
It is for a pool use.
Okay.
And then must be met.
All the regulations pertaining to pools must be met.
Per town, or I had Enfield.
For town of Enfield regulations.
Zoning regulations.
Enfield. Regulations. Okay, so what we are voting on. If we vote in favor of this application, it is for a variance that does not require a basement under the current application. However, all other regulations pertaining to pools must be met per the town of Enfield regulations.
Very good.
Okay?
Right.
All those in favor? Motion passes five zero.
You don't need a basement.
So basically what that means is when this is reviewed by planning and zoning, they're probably going to have some questions for them. For you.
Looking forward to it. Look forward to it. We spend a lot of time down here.
You're ninety-nine percent of the way there.
Just show up and pull the permit like normal.
Well, they have the application.
Just start going.
The application is down there, they're just holding on for this meeting.
Well, you've got to, Ginny, the next step is they will receive a letter from the town that their variance has been granted. At that point, all other boards and commissions will be aware of it. And then you just go do your thing.
Yeah, we've actually been in touch, talked to the building department quite extensively and talked to the guy that reviewed the plans and signed off on the engineering and all that stuff.
The application was submitted on the second of September, so.
We'll move forward.
Here we are, waiting.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. In your packets, you have the minutes of July twenty-eighth. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Made by Mo, seconded by Mary Ann. Discussion. Sensing none, all those in favor? Motion passes five zero. Correspondents, Ginny, do you have anything other than what the town attorney update is?
No, just the memo from the town attorney.
All right. We have one in our packet dated August. This one's dated September. The only change I saw was on Morgan versus Enfield Planning and Zoning.
Mr. Chairman, there's also changes on Kreck versus Enfield ZBA. The dates have changed when briefs are due.
Oh, yeah. Okay, good catch, Lynn. So that's brought to everyone's attention.
Just in case, Kreck is coming in front of planning and zoning on Thursday for site modifications.
Okay.
Ginny, where's our, I didn't see a copy of the updated zoning enforcement document.
I just found out about this Sunday, so I will go in and see if I can find it and email it to you all if I can find it. It can also be part of your next meeting, but I didn't see the packet.
We also have a class. Did you bring that? I saw it in email tonight. It's in November. I meant to bring a copy of it.
No, I will scan it in.
Well, I think everyone got it in today's mail. Can someone refresh my memory on it? I think, I think that the subject matter is important and I think if we can make it, I think we should try.
I can refresh your memory in just a second.
Oh, the Advanced Land Use Academy, the one I sent today?
Right, November. Then had them.
Yes.
What's the timing on that? I wasn't really clear.
It's a Saturday.
Yeah, I got that part.
Yeah, it's a Saturday.
Something like from nine to two, nine to twelve.
I've been to these and they're full day. I've got one.
Yeah.
You sent this out.
I did.
You want to talk about it?
While you're looking, I sent out to each one of you this zoning board of appeals, roles and responsibilities of local land use officers. I have to tell you, I would strongly suggest that you take this document and put it in the front of your zoning book and carry it with you at all times. This is, it's very good, it's an easy read, and it keeps you, especially zoning, ZBA side. It talks about the voting, our duties, how variances are done. I just think it's a nice little cheat sheet, truthfully, and we're always learning. And I thank Ginny for forwarding it on. This was, these are the kind of documents that makes it, makes our job easier, or at least educates us.
I'm glad you found it useful.
Right, and that's why as for this class, I've been to them. They're absolutely worthwhile and I would strongly suggest, they had two in the last couple of weeks. I have not been able to attend either one of them, but Mo, I know you went.
Yep.
I don't know if.
I went to one.
I've been to both. They were extremely helpful. The first more than the second. The first did more of an overview of the legal arena and meeting pointers and that type of thing. Whereas the second class was exclusively about reading site plans and how to read the site plan, how to determine various things on the actual plan so that you know what you're looking at when you're looking at them. But they were both very, very helpful.
The first, the first workshop, I received slides, great.
Could you forward those?
Yes, I was going to say, I can forward, there were no handouts or anything for the second one. I have asked if there's going to be any. I haven't gotten an answer yet.
Handouts didn't, I'm not sure how he could do handouts.
It was more like a hands-on kind of thing.
Yeah. I knew I wanted to.
I think it was helpful for maybe somebody that doesn't work with a lot of plans or sees them less frequently maybe than I do, could have got a lot more from it than maybe I did, but I'm not looking at it from the, I have extra skill in a certain area that maybe other people might not. But I think as a, as a general thing, it was very helpful.
Since I wasn't able to attend, Andrew, maybe you and I could have a little more. I mean, I've been looking at plans now for a while and I've seen a few times, or you need to look at like these top ten things every time. Let's see if these things are there.
I think a lot of the things that he covered probably don't pertain to this board so much. More for site plan development type things.
Right. The other thing that I saw, State Rep. Andalora is going to have, he's going to be keynote speaker at an event. I forgot the date on that one. Anyway, we did receive it. I think Tracy forwarded it on. I don't believe the date's conducive, but Vinnie might be willing to come up in this neck of the woods. I was going to ask him. He's going to talk strictly about the legislation that's being put into play that will affect land use boards and ZBA. So I have that on my desk to see if I can follow up with him and see if he might be willing to come up and do it low up here. Yeah, figure what the heck, we'll ask.
Okay, information on the class. November first starts at eight thirty, goes till three o'clock. Some of the things they'll be talking about is bias and pre-deposition, implementation and enforcing of land use decisions, things like that, so.
I thought the subjects were good.
I've been to one of these already. Actually, I think I've been to two. But they're always a great refresher to go. Different people teach them, you get different, you know, they'll always give you their spiel at the front, you know.
It's not legal advice.
It's not legal advice. It's, it's my opinion.
We had a few open items from our June meeting, Mr. Chairman, that I still, we didn't discuss this evening. The Aznan Talk LED sign, we've repeatedly asked. I think our, we've asked for them to get a letter.
I'm meeting with Courtney, I have a weekly meeting with Courtney on Tuesdays, usually one, one-thirty. And I have, I thought you would be asking that, but I have on my list to ask her if she's decided who's doing what and who's assuming what duties. And if indeed that's my call, then, you know, I can let you know. And if she picks someone else, I can let you know that too. But I did have on my list about the LED sign. I was tempted to, to bring a draft letter for you all to look at, but that would be overstepping my bounds, so I have to wait.
There, has there been no discussion as to, in the interim, between now and the time you guys meet, there's no enforcement in town? There's got to be somebody that is, oh, you're meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
I missed that part, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm like.
One thirty tomorrow.
I'm like, wait a minute, there's no authority yet.
One of the discussions that I'm being told is that they're state property and they believe that they get to follow state rules. But I, I am quite clearly sure that anyone who does business in the town of Enfield, state or otherwise, must first follow town ordinances. So maybe you need to help, or I don't know if you need me to find that regulation in our book, and I'll be happy through the chairman if we need to send a note, what we do.
What else do you, what else was on your list?
Barrels at the mobile station in Enfield Street, that's done.
Thank you, Mr. Farm Marshall.
The Impact Environmental Station at Smith's Dairy, we're trying to, we had received a whole packet of information on that. So I don't know what, what we're doing on that one because they.
She's right.
I don't know if that mobile station across the street is going to become a gas station again, or they just took the, took them out. I don't.
From what I understand, they have abandoned the property.
The tanks are gone. What it will be utilized for next is anything that's allowed in that zone. I would assume, I mean, you know, like they had a convenience store there, maybe they would do another convenience store. It's the same owners of the property.
Right, I'm just saying, so this Impact Environmental issue that's going on, where they had the remediation station behind Smith Dairy Bar for a lack of a address.
Yep.
The question is, how, we must be getting close now to having that removed. Where the question is, how, we must be getting close now to having that removed.
I don't think they can remove it until all the pollutants are dissipated, and I just got the impression that it would be going on for another few years. I don't have anything to base that on, it's just...
Could you just do the chairman, could we just get a, she followed up with us in the past directly?
Well, here's, here's, the reason I asked to see what was on your list is what I'd like you to do is before Ginny's meeting with Courtney tomorrow, send her an email with a copy to Courtney. These are concerns of our zoning board of appeals. And, and who is, you know, who is looking into this? Do we, when can we anticipate someone following up on this? Now let's get the ball rolling that way.
Excellent suggestion, P. D.
I will, do you want to review it first, or you just want a copy in?
Send me a copy, but I don't think it has to be...
Okay.
...reviewed, and pretty much what we just talked about.
Okay. Do we have anything new we want to add? Is there anything out there that we want to, anybody, once, twice?
Okay, any other business? Motion to adjourn. Made by Mo.
Second.
Seconded by Mary Ann. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, we are adjourned.
Right.